Council is now called to order, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. In the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic from which this stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice. At this time, we'll have the optional prayer from Councilwoman Clear.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. God, please grant us the serenity to accept the things that we cannot change, the courage to change the things that we can, and the wisdom to know the difference. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Councilwoman Clear. I love that meditation. May I please have the roll call, Mr. Smith?
Mr. Anderson?
Here.
Mrs. Clear?
Here.
Mr. Rastetter?
Here.
Mrs. Rennie?
Here.
Mrs. Showerman?
Here.
Mr. Shank?
Here.
Chairman Horton?
Here. We've reached a portion of our meeting where we allow for public comment, for the hearing of the public. For those who traditionally called ahead, we allot them five minutes. For those who may be joining us online who didn't call ahead and wish to be heard, we allot you three minutes. We just ask that you give your name and your address. And so are there any citizens desiring to be heard? Are there any citizens desiring to be heard? Hearing none, seeing none in the chat, I'll entertain a motion to accept the minutes. Well, we don't have minutes for approval, although that's a space on our agenda. We'll go right to reports of county officials. The county executive or her designee has indicated that there'll be no report this evening, and we'll go right to the Finance Committee report with Chairman Clear.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. The Finance Committee met on Thursday, November 12th, and tonight I will be presenting new items A through G and old items A through R. Thank you very much. That concludes my report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Finance Chairman, woman of clear. Next up is Personnel Committee. Chairman Rennie?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Personnel Committee has nothing to submit for this evening's agenda.
Thank you, Personnel Chair Rennie. This is always a special part. We'll move to citations or reports from other members of council. We'll have Vice Chairman Carl Anderson present those citations. Or how would you like to?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm just going to just mention their names, and this is not to not spend the time with each of these individuals. We have six tonight, and we have lots of business to do. Suffice to say, each and every one of these citizens of Erie County have meant quite a bit to many number of people. Many of our friends, family members, people that we've associated with throughout the years. And I know many of them are going to be missed, all of them certainly are going to be missed. And it's personal with me, with all of these, as I'm close with either them or their families. First, I'll mention, and I would ask that they be placed in, the citations be placed into the records, but I'm just going to mention their names and a little about them. Steve Bowen, longtime voice of Gannon Sports, a professor at Gannon, my first professor when I entered college in the fall of 1985 in a communications class. And Steve and I shared a relationship from that time. He was always very supportive of me, loved his native community of Erie, and he will be missed. Dan Griswinski, Chopper Dan, I've known since I was six years old. He and I began kindergarten together at Penn School, and Dan is a loyal and lifelong friend. Linda Palambi, the mother of Ron Palambi Jr., professional bowler, well-known person in Erie. The Palambi family has a special relationship with my family, and we send our best wishes and love to them. Linda will be missed. Bill Wittenberg, a friend to many of us, particularly those interested in the community college effort. Bill was always supportive, never silent on his opinions of moving forward with community college education and how that should come about. He was so excited and supportive when we were able to finally get passage of a community college through the Board of Education. Bill, for all of his community service, will be missed. Lorena Zabowski, mother of a very close friend of mine, Adams Zabowski, and his brother, Andy, who I went to school with. She raised a family of five children who she loved and cared for, and spent much of her time with the lives of her grandchildren, and she was a special person. She certainly will be missed. And lastly, today, Sally Carlo Kohler, a lady who spent her life loving Erie and loving Prescott State Park. Sally was a teacher of mine, and her former husband, Joe Kohler, was a principal of mine when I was at Penn School and then Wayne Elementary School. I often credit Sally, and her and I shared a special bond over the years with helping develop my interest in politics. She was an avid Republican and learned about the route that then-candidate Ronald Reagan was taking from this Erie County courthouse where he had a press conference and then meeting with executives for a luncheon at GE. She had the whole student body standing outside of Wayne School, and when the caravan came by, Ronald Reagan had his limousine stopped, and he came out and greeted Sally Kohler and spoke to all of the kids there. I was a 13-year-old sixth grader on the newspaper staff at the time, and I remember it as if it was yesterday. And Sally's love for her community and for her country will never be forgotten, and I certainly credit Sally with my early interest in my love for community service and politics. So, Mr. Chairman, I present those names to you tonight with regret, but with pleasant memories and honor for each and every one of them, and a special tribute and thank you to their families for sharing them with us. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Vice Chairman Anderson. Before we go on, those last two, I just want to make a quick comment on. William Wittenberg sent me correspondence, no less than once or twice a month. He always had an idea or plan on how we should, county council could be doing something better. And it wasn't always, they weren't always nice letters, but he was always a gentleman about it. He was passionate. And Sally Kohler, I've known her since I was a kid. I went to Strong Vincent where her sons were swim, water polo and swim stars. When Strong Vincent had, was the powerhouse swim team in the city. And I remember many of the conversations we had. She stayed on West 7th Street. I worked at a Braxis. I'd walk around the corner and I'd talk to Ms. Kohler. She'll be sorely missed, and she was a great lover of this community. She'll be sorely missed.
Yes.
If you are finished, I don't want to interrupt. Okay, great. I was looking to amend the agenda to move new business to number seven and old business to number eight. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
It's been moved to invert it. It's been seconded. It's been properly moved by Councilwoman Clear, seconded by Vice Chairman Anderson to be invert the agenda, adding old business at the end and starting with new business. Under item A, under new business.
Mr. Smith? Oh, yeah. Vote on the amendment. Mr. Smith, could I have roll call on the amendment?
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Showerman?
Yes.
Mr. Shank?
Yes.
Chairman Horton?
Yes. Mr. Smith, I have first reading of ordinance number 105 of 2020 entitled only.
A first reading of ordinance number 105, 2020, 33rd, 2020, general fund budget, supplemental appropriation of $134,282 recovered from GEIDC, develop Erie in bankruptcy proceedings.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Councilman.
I would, I move to move, sorry, I move to make ordinance 105 to a second.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Vice Chairman Anderson.
I think if we could keep this as a first reading until we have a first and second, and then amend it, since he did do the first reading. Finance Chair Clear, if you wouldn't mind, a friendly amendment to that, to first do it as a motion now, and then amend it after it's seconded.
Okay. So, move to, take items A, B, and C?
I'm sorry. He did a first reading, so just a motion to accept the first reading.
Okay. Motion to accept the first reading.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded by councilpersons Clear and Anderson. Any discussion?
Ken, go ahead.
And I look to amend, move to amend the agenda to move this to a second reading?
Second.
I think parliamentarily, I think parliamentarily, because it was first and seconded, we had a motion on the table that we, that we have to vote on that, just structurally, the way that we did it. I know the intent, and so if you all humor me so we can get right back on, we'll try this again, under new business. And then she can just, did we vote on the amendment for that?
She didn't amend.
Okay. Okay, call for the question.
On the motion to move ordinance 105 to a second reading, Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Showerman?
Yes.
Mr. Shank?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Chairman Horton?
Yes.
And then I move to amend ordinance 106 and 107 to a second reading.
It's been properly moved, I'll entertain a second.
I thought we voted on that. Did we, did we just voted on the amendment, Mr. Smith, or did we vote?
Mr. Chairman, we just moved to make 105 a second reading. We haven't voted on it yet, but it would be acceptable, I suppose, if you move the others to second readings, and then we could vote on each one separately. I do have to make a second reading of 105 and the others eventually.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded by councilpersons Clear and Anderson that we move items B and C to a second. Call for the question.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Showerman?
Yes.
Mr. Shank?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Chairman Horton?
Yes. So, yes, on the amendment pass, I'll entertain a motion to act on all three of these, second.
So moved.
Mr. Chairman?
Excuse me?
Mr. Chairman, I believe you'll want to have a second reading of ordinance 105, followed by a possible motion and second. If you'll allow me, I'll make a second reading of that ordinance, and then you can move on each one, 105, 106, and 107, as I make second readings.
Okay.
Is that all right, sir?
That's great.
So, I'll begin with a second reading of ordinance number 105, 2020, 33rd, 2020, general fund budget, supplemental appropriation of $134,282 recovered from GEIDC, develop Erie in bankruptcy proceedings.
So moved. Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded by councilpersons Showerman and Clear. Any discussion? Call for the question, please.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Showerman?
Yes.
Mr. Shank?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Chairman Horton?
Yes. Second reading of ordinance number 106 entitled only, please, Mr. Smith.
A second reading of ordinance number 106, 2020, 4th, 2020, Public Health Fund Budget, supplemental appropriation of $60,000 to increase the revenue grant line and professional fees in the Tobacco Use Prevention Program.
So moved.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded by councilpersons Clear and Anderson. Any discussion? Call for the question.
Mrs. Showerman?
Yes.
Mr. Shank?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Chairman Horton?
Yes. Second reading of ordinance number 107 entitled only, please.
A second reading of ordinance number 107, 2020, approving the 2021 Erie County Community College Budget.
So moved.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded by councilpersons Clear and Anderson. Is there any discussion? Call for the question.
On ordinance 107, Mr. Shank?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Showerman?
Yes.
Chairman Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I moved to, moved D to a second reading, please. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Second. That's for ordinance number 108.
It's been properly moved and seconded by councilpersons Clear and Anderson. Is there any discussion? Call for the question, please, on the amendment.
To move ordinance 108 to a second reading, Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Showerman?
Yes.
Mr. Shank?
Yes.
Chairman Horton?
Yes. Second reading of ordinance number 108 entitled only, please, Mr. Smith.
A second reading of ordinance number 108, 2020, 2020, Public Health Fund Budget, revised expenditures of $66,355 for ELC, Enhancing Detection Bureau, elimination of seven positions, and creation of six positions.
So moved.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded by councilpersons Clear and Anderson. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, call for the question.
On ordinance 108, Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Showerman?
Yes.
Mr. Shank?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Chairman Horton?
Yes. Resolution number 56, 2020 entitled only, please.
Resolution 56, 2020, approving the financial statements and independent auditors' report for the county of Erie and related funds for calendar year ending December 31, 2019.
So moved. Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded by councilpersons Showerman and Rastetter. Is there any discussion? Roll call, please, Mr. Smith.
On resolution 56, Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Showerman?
Yes.
Mr. Shank?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Chairman Horton?
Yes. Resolution number 57, 2020 entitled only, please.
Resolution 57, 2020, reappointment of Zelenkovsky Axle Rod LLC to perform comprehensive single audit for Erie County and related funds for the year ending December 31, 2020.
So moved.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded by councilpersons Clear and Anderson. Is there any discussion? Roll call, please.
On resolution 57, Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Showerman?
Yes.
Mr. Shank?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Chairman Horton?
Yes. Possible sale of parcel? Intertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded by councilpersons Clear and Anderson. Any discussion? Roll call on the question.
On the sale of parcel from inventory, Mrs. Showerman?
Yes.
Mr. Shank?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Chairman Horton?
Yes. Now, go back up to old business. Second reading of ordinance number 83, 2020, entitled only.
A second reading of ordinance number 83, 2020, 2021, Debt Service Fund Budget.
So moved.
Second, as presented.
It's been properly moved and seconded by councilpersons Clear and Anderson. Any discussion? Roll call on the question.
On ordinance number 83, Mr. Shank?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Showerman?
Yes.
Chairman Horton?
Yes. Second reading of ordinance number 84, 2020.
Second reading of ordinance number 84, 2020, 2021, Employee Fringe Benefit Fund Budget.
So moved, as presented.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
On ordinance 84, Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Showerman?
Yes.
Mr. Shank?
Yes.
Chairman Horton?
Yes. Second reading of ordinance number 85?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I move to amend the agenda to group action items 1 through 3.
Second.
Mr. Chairman, before we make that move, I should read the second reading of the title, followed by the amendment, if that's all right?
That'd be great.
My apologies, Mr. Smith.
The second reading of ordinance number 85, 2020, 2021, Health Choices Fund Budget.
It's been properly moved by Councilwoman Clear and Anderson. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I move to amend the agenda to group action items 4 through 5. Oh, 1 through 3, I'm so sorry, 1 through 3 first.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Okay, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Councilman.
I would like it noted for the record that should this grouping pass, that $4,307 in grant funding will be lost to Erie County residents. Health Choices gives Pennsylvania residents greater access to the health insurance they need. There are no county dollars involved with this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Councilman.
Thank you. I just want to mention, so the public understands what we're doing here in many of these items. The first items of each of these ordinances are to reduce overtime by 10%, reduce the nonessential supplies by 5%, and reduce nonessential travel by 10%. The, each of these individual departments will have an opportunity to readjust their budgets if, in fact, these things become a necessary part of their 2021 ability to do their work. And so, if that occurs, and they do properly adjust their budgets within their department, the grant funds won't get lost at all, although they're listed in here as being taken away from specific grants, those adjustments can be made, and as we've been told, certainly will be made throughout the year in each of these departments. So, the purpose, the real purpose here is to show the, each of the departments that we're paying attention to the overtime and to the supplies and the unnecessary travel. And so, I will be supporting this as well as many of the other 1 through 3 action items in each of the sections for that reason. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Councilman Anderson. Any other discussion? Roll call, Mr. Smith?
On action sheets 1 through 3, or ordinance number 85, Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
No.
Mrs. Showerman?
Yes.
Mr. Shank?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Chairman Horton?
No.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I would like to move, to amend the agenda to group action items 4 and 5.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded by councilpersons Anderson, I mean, excuse me, Clear and Anderson. Is there any discussion? Roll call, please, Mr. Smith.
On action sheets number 4 and 5 of ordinance 85, Mr. Rastetter? On action sheets number four and five of ordinance 85, Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Showerman?
Yes.
Mr. Shank?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Chairman Horton?
Yes.
Is there a face sheet amendment you have? Yes.
Chairman Horton?
Yes.
I would like to move to have an amendment to the cover sheet for the Health Choice Fund to show that action sheet one through three was voted five to two.
I think you need a new amount.
And the amounts did not change.
Amount did not change. Sorry, Mr. Chairman, I had asked Mrs. Schwartzbager if the face amount of the ordinance changed as a result of the action sheets.
So we're good?
And it has not.
We're good? See, keep following up. Second reading of ordinance number 86.
One moment, Mr. Chairman. Sorry, I think.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Vice Chairman Anderson.
Thank you. Could we just ask that the Finance Chair would make a motion to change the cover sheet to reflect the action items that are passed in each of these ordinances? Would that be appropriate? No, that's okay. But if we asked to change it to reflect what passed, then you guys can figure that out, right?
I have the figures. My apology. I was.
So if, could we do it in that fashion and then get the number from our account?
She can just give it to us right now and just kill.
I have it right now. I was mistaken.
We'll just have a cover sheet. I'll entertain a motion, a cover sheet to reflect that new number. I'll entertain that motion once she gives us the number.
Okay, but it would be, it would be Finance Chair Clear that will be making all the time. I guess that's what I'm.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to amend the face sheet, cover sheet?
You have to get the, correct the number.
As a result of the voting, the new revenue amount for this ordinance is $120,739,959. And the expenditures are $120,739,959.
No, not the most.
I move to amend the agenda, or sorry, amend the face sheet, face cover sheet to the number given by Ms. Schwartzbager.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded by Finance Chair Clear and Vice Chairman Anderson. Is there any discussion? Call for the, call for the vote.
On the amendment to the face sheet of ordinance 85, Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Showerman?
Yes.
Mr. Shank?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Chairman Horton?
Yes. That was on the amendment. Second reading of ordinance number 85. 86, excuse me. Second reading of ordinance, no, we just voted on the amendment.
Right.
Okay, got you. Second reading of ordinance number 86.
I think, Mr. Chairman, we probably need to vote on 85 as amended.
That's what, that's what I thought.
You are correct, sir.
Okay, so call for the question.
Mrs. Showerman?
Yes.
Mr. Shank?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
No.
Chairman Horton?
Yes. If anybody's wondering why I voted inverted like that, is it's evident that it's, you have the support for it. I won't be contentious about it. Second reading of ordinance number 862020, please.
The second reading of ordinance number 862020, 2021 mental health intellectual disability fund budget.
So moved. Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded by council persons Clear and Showerman. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I move to amend the agenda to group action items one through three.
Second.
I think we're doing something structurally wrong. Because I'm under the impression that Roberts ruled that once their motion has been properly moved and seconded and it's on the floor, we have to vote on it. And so that amendment should go. When I asked for the initial reading, you should make your amendment at that.
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Upon my second reading and a motion and a second, the following would be an amendment to that ordinance. So Mrs. Clear was in the correct order there. We would then vote on the amendments, of course, as we go through, followed by the face sheet, followed by the ordinance as amended. Structurally, you're sound.
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Smith. Roll call for the question.
Amendment, I would like to comment on that. Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Chairman, I would like to note again, if this is approved, $8,817 in grant funding for mental health and intellectual disabilities services will be lost to the community. It provides a broad array of services for individuals and families in Erie County. I would also submit that when you have departments with funding that is primarily or almost totally funded by grant service, it is somewhat disingenuous to suggest that they can move funds around at will after council cuts services that are funded by grants. I don't think it's as simple as that, and I think this puts an undue burden, in many cases, upon departments and upon the delivery of services in Erie County. Thank you.
Any other discussion by members of council?
Mr. Chairman? Well, I thought we were going to do that just in the first go around, but I guess I'll go along. Doing it each time. Each department has the ability to move within their departments 10% of their funds and per the contracts of the union, when overtime is necessary, they have to accept that overtime. Overtime comes when they might be down a complement of employees, full-time employees, and they need extra service from the existing employees. And so once again, they will and do have the ability to simply move those funds around to ensure that that overtime is met and those particular grant monies are not lost. Once again, this is to ensure the public that overtime is truly essential and not being taken advantage of or wasted and that we show, in fact, that we're paying attention to the things that are happening within our county, within the departments. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Vice Chairman Anderson. Any other discussion from members of council? Roll call, please, Mr. Smith, on the amendment.
On action sheets one through three for ordinance 86, Mr. Shank?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
No.
Mrs. Showerman?
Yes.
Chairman Horton?
No. Second reading of ordinance number 86?
Oh, yes.
Four and five.
Okay. Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I move to amend the agenda to group action items four and five.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
It's been properly moved by Chairman Clear, Vice Chairman Anderson. Is there any discussion on four and five action sheet? Call for the question.
On action sheets four and five of ordinance 86, Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Showerman?
Yes.
Mr. Shank?
Yes.
Chairman Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Do I need to amend the face sheet of the ordinance?
As a result of these actions, the updated expenditure amount is $28,962,171.
And I move to amend the face sheet of ordinance 86 to Ms. Schwartzbager's figure.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded by Councilwoman Clear, Councilman Anderson. Is there any discussion? Roll call, please, Mr. Smith.
On the motion to amend the face sheet to $28,962,171, Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Showerman?
Yes.
Mr. Shank?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes. Second reading of ordinance number 86 as amended.
You don't read it first?
No, ma'am. You make that motion to amend it as
Okay.
to pass it as amended.
I would like to make a motion to pass this as amended.
Second on ordinance number 86.
On number 86.
It's been properly moved and seconded. Finance Chair and Vice Chair, offer the discussion. Offer the vote.
On ordinance 86 as amended, Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
No.
Mrs. Showerman?
Yes.
Mr. Shank?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Chairman Horton?
Yes. What was that figure again, 28?
Mr. Chairman?
962,000. Okay.
That would be the same number that's on the cover, Chairman Horton.
Second reading of ordinance number 87.
A second reading of ordinance number 87, 2020, 2021 drug and alcohol abuse fund budget.
So moved.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded.
Mr. Chairman, I move to amend ordinance number 87 to group items one through three.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded by Councilwoman Clear, Councilman Anderson. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Once again, I would like to object to the, to the decrease in what is grant funding. I believe this puts an undue burden upon the departments to provide services, and I don't see how, if their, if their revenue lines are decreased, they can't expend money that isn't there. So this particular, this grouping of action sheets for overtime, travel, and a variety of supplies amounts to $3,398 in grant funding that does not involve county dollars, does not involve taxpayer dollars. So I just want that noted.
Fully noted.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Once again, each department has the ability to move money around, and although the revenue may be decreased, they still have wiggle room within their budgets to be able to move money around to cover the necessary elements to get the job done. In this case, the overtime, which would then move taxpayer money in a position to not only be leveraged with grant money, but to have that grant money become acceptable as part of the overtime. We know that this is a part of what they do. It is, once again, a part of their union contract negotiations. They understand how to do it. The burden is not on them. The burden is on this council to be responsible to the taxpayers to ensure that what we're doing is having a keen eye on all departments and letting them know, one, that not only we support what they're doing and the work that they do on behalf of the citizens of Erie County, but, two, that we're paying attention to make sure that the work that they're doing is essential and to the best benefit of the taxpayers of Erie County. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Vice Chairman Anderson. Any other discussion? Roll call on the amendment.
On the amendment to action sheets one through three, Mrs. Rennie?
No.
Mrs. Showerman?
Yes.
Mr. Shank?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Chairman Horton?
No.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I move to amend ordinance number 87 to group items four and five.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded by council persons Clear and Anderson. Is there any discussion on action sheets four and five? I call for the question on the amendment.
On action sheets four and five of ordinance 87, Mrs. Showerman?
Yes.
Mr. Shank?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Chairman Horton?
Yes.
As a result of this vote, the updated expenditure amount for the Drug and Alcohol Fund is $6,694,107.
Mr. Chairman, I move to amend the face sheet of ordinance number 87 to Ms. Schwartzbager's figure.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded by council persons Clear and Anderson. To amend it, to accept the face sheet, amend it to reflect that figure provided by our CPA. Is there any discussion? Roll call on the question.
On the amendment of the face sheet, Mr. Shank?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Showerman?
Yes.
Chairman Horton?
Yes. Yes.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I move to approve the ordinance number eighty-seven as amended.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded. Any discussion? Call for the question.
On the ordinance as amended, Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
No.
Mrs. Showerman?
Yes.
Mr. Schenk?
Yes.
Chairman Horton?
Yes. Second reading of ordinance number eighty-eight.
A second reading of ordinance number eighty-eight, twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one Children and Youth Services Fund Budget.
So moved?
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded by Councilpersons Clear and Anderson. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I move to amend ordinance number eighty-eight to group numbers one through three.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded to amend to reflect one through three group. Is there any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
This particular fund has a portion of county share within it. I have actually two competing numbers on this. I show twenty thousand. But at any rate, eighty percent of the funding for these programs and services, overtime, supplies, and travel lines is funded by grants. And I might mention that the demand for these services have increased dramatically this year in a time of COVID. I do not buy into the ease with which departments can move money around. I have experienced this directly. I know this not to be true. It is difficult at best for department heads to live within the rules and the constraints that are sometimes imposed upon them to reduce revenues in a service that is so needed and is still minimally funded through county tax dollars is something that I find objectionable, and I would just like to state it for the record.
Any further discussion by any members of council?
Mr. Chairman?
Vice Chairman Anderson?
Thank you. I will agree with my colleague, Councilwoman Rennie, that these services, without question, are increasing in our community to an alarming rate, no less, and that these services will be needed more and more the less and less positive impact many people feel from the government and the decisions that elected officials make in our community. However, each department understands and has the ability to move within their budgets the funds to secure the overtime necessary. And by the way, they can come down to council and ask for supplemental funding if and when necessary to also do that, which, as these are under their union contract, need to be followed through. And indeed, they may come through eighty percent of funding from other sources outside of Kent County tax dollars. But those will be also recovered when, in fact, the overtime has been undertaken, which is a necessary step in each and every one of these departments through the union contracts that each and every one of them have. So although it appears as what we're doing today may seem counterintuitive, what we are doing is letting the taxpayer know that we're paying attention to what is happening within the departments and letting the departments know that we're paying attention to what is happening, but that we will be there when the work that they need to get done has been shown to us, has risen to a level that requires any further action. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome. Vice Chairman Anderson. Any other discussion from members of council? Call for the question on the amendment.
On the amendment of ordinance eighty-eight with action sheets one through three, Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
No.
Mrs. Showerman?
Yes.
Mr. Schenk?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Chairman Horton?
No. Second reading.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman. I move to amend the ordinance number eighty-eight to read, or I'm sorry, to group together items four through eight.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded by Councilpersons Clear and Anderson. Is there any discussion? Roll call, please, Mr. Smith.
Amending ordinance eighty-eight with action sheets four through eight, Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Showerman?
Yes.
Mr. Schenk?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Chairman Horton?
Yes.
As a result of this vote, the updated expenditure amount for the Children and Youth Fund balance is sixty-six million, nine hundred and twelve thousand, six hundred and forty-eight dollars.
Mr. Chairman, I move to amend the face sheet of ordinance number eighty-eight to Ms. Schwarzfeger's figure.
Second.
Been properly moved and seconded by Councilpersons Clear and Anderson. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
On the motion to amend the face sheet, Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Showerman?
Yes.
Mr. Schenk?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Chairman Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve ordinance number eighty-eight as amended.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded by Councilpersons Clear and Anderson. Offer the vote.
Mrs. Showerman?
Yes.
Mr. Schenk?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
No.
Chairman Horton?
Yes. Second reading of ordinance number eighty-nine. Second reading of ordinance number eighty-nine.
A second reading of ordinance number eighty-nine, twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one Planning and Community Development Fund Budget.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Vice Chairman Anderson.
Either in our book or the ordinance number we have backwards, as we changed that to Domestic Relations based on our book. So should we switch? Switch the book to reflect that, or it seems like ordinance eighty-nine was correct?
I would change the book, and I wouldn't mess with the word being documented.
Thank you. Can we take a moment to do that?
Yes. Jump back.
Thank you, sir.
Oh, no. Everybody good?
Sorry. Yeah. So moved?
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded on the amendment of ordinance number eighty-nine.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I move to amend ordinance number eighty-nine to group items, action items one through three. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded by Councilpersons Clear and Anderson on the amendment. Is there any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Once again, I would like to recognize that the bulk of the funds that have been decreased, the bulk of the lines of service, travel, overtime, and a variety of supplies come from grant sources. To do something, to make a statement, is really a political move. It is not going to improve services in the county. It is not going to improve operations within county government. If anything, this is going to cause a reduction in efficiency and effectiveness. I know that this is being done to make a statement, to show that we are mindful of the taxpayers. However, there is no practical value to this, these action sheets, just as there has been no practical value to the earlier ones. And I would just like to have that noted for the record. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Rennie. Any other discussion?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Vice Chairman Anderson.
Thank you. First, I would like to recognize and appreciate my colleague's tenacity for her continued belief in in what she is speaking to, and I have a great respect for her and for that. Although I do disagree with her that, yes, we are making a political statement, but a necessary political statement. And more importantly, the statement is that we are not picking and choosing or picking on any particular departments and therefore potentially having the impact of lowering morale or having departments believe that they're being essentially focused on for the fact of the overtime that happens in those departments. What we are doing is going across the board with each department in a ten percent cut, which, yes, may in fact affect some in a grant program. But again, those funds can be reallocated within the department. And when the overtime eventually becomes necessary, those grant dollars will be leveraged with the taxpayer dollars, and they will be used to the best benefit of Erie County. So with that in mind, it is important that we continue on with the work that we're doing. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Vice Chairman Anderson. Any other discussion from members of council? Roll call on the amendment.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
No.
Mrs. Showerman?
Yes.
Mr. Schenk?
Yes.
Chairman Horton?
No. Second reading of ordinance. Go ahead.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman. I move to amend the ordinance number eighty-nine to group together items four and five.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded by Councilpersons Clear and Anderson. Any discussion on action sheets four and five? Seeing, hearing, none. Call for the question.
Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Showerman?
Yes.
Mr. Schenk?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Chairman Horton?
Yes.
As a result of this vote, the amended expenditure amount for the Planning Fund is seven million, seven hundred and fifty-four thousand, four hundred and ninety-three dollars.
Mr. Chairman, I move to amend the face sheet of ordinance number eighty-nine to reflect Ms. Schwarzfeger's figure.
Second.
Been properly moved and seconded by Councilpersons Clear and Anderson. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Showerman?
Yes.
Mr. Schenk?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Chairman Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve ordinance number eighty-nine as amended.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded by Councilpersons Clear and Anderson. Is there any discussion? Roll call, please.
On eighty-nine as amended, Mrs. Rennie?
No.
Mrs. Showerman?
Yes.
Mr. Schenk?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Chairman Horton?
Yes. Second reading of ordinance number ninety.
A second reading of ordinance number ninety, twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one Domestic Relations Fund Budget.
So moved?
Second.
Properly moved and seconded.
Mr. Chairman, I move to amend ordinance number ninety to read action sheet one only.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded. Totally amend. Is there any discussion? Roll call, please, on the amendment.
Amendment of ordinance ninety with action sheet one, Mrs. Showerman?
Yes.
Mr. Schenk?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
No.
Chairman Horton?
No.
Mr. Chairman, I move to amend ordinance number ninety to read items, to group, sorry, to group together items, action items two through four.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded by Councilpersons Clear and Anderson. Is there any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Schenk?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Showerman?
Yes.
Chairman Horton?
Yes.
The amended expenditure amount for the Domestic Relations Fund is five million, four hundred and thirty-two thousand, sixty-three dollars.
Mr. Chairman, I move to amend the face sheet of ordinance number ninety to reflect Ms. Schwarzfeger's figure.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded by Councilpersons Clear and Anderson. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
On the amendment of the face sheet, Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Showerman?
Yes.
Mr. Schenk?
Yes.
Chairman Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve ordinance number ninety as amended.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded by councilpersons Cleary and Anderson. Is there any discussion? Roll call on it.
Mrs. Cleary?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
No.
Mrs. Showerman?
Yes.
Mr. Shank?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Chairman Horton?
I messed up there. What are we, is that the amendment? Of the face sheet?
It's the, it's the approved as amended.
The ordinance as amended. Yes. I thought we were doing all that face sheet to stay, we didn't have to amend it. Second reading of ordinance number ninety-one, please.
Second reading of ordinance number ninety-one, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, Library Fund Budget.
So moved?
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded by councilpersons Cleary and Anderson. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I move to amend ordinance number ninety-one to read item one only.
Second.
Face sheet one.
It's been properly moved and seconded by councilpersons Cleary and Anderson. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
On the amendment of ninety-one with action sheet one, Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Showerman?
Yes.
Mr. Shank?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Cleary?
Yes.
Chairman Horton?
No.
Mr. Chairman, I move to amend ordinance number ninety-one to group action items two, I lied, three and four.
Second.
That was three and four only, Mrs. Cleary?
Three and four only, please, Mr. Smith.
And just, I note that we haven't acted on action sheet two, but...
We do not, we pulled two and five, Mr. Smith.
Thank you. I must have missed that one. On action sheets three and four, amending ordinance ninety-one, Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Showerman?
Yes.
Mr. Shank?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Cleary?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Chairman Horton?
Yes.
The amended expenditure amount for the Library Fund is seven million, five hundred and fifty-seven thousand, eight hundred and seventy-eight dollars.
Mr. Chairman, I move to amend the face sheet of ordinance number ninety-one to what Ms. Schwarzfeger has, figures has given us.
Second.
They got messed up my vote. It's been properly moved and seconded by councilpersons Cleary and Anderson. Is there any discussion? Roll call, please, on the amendment.
Mrs. Showerman?
Yes.
Mr. Shank?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Cleary?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Chairman Horton?
Second reading. Roll call, please, Mr. Smith.
Mr. Chairman?
My vote. Yes.
I just needed your vote on the face sheet, sir.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the, sorry, to approve ordinance number ninety-one as amended.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded by councilpersons Cleary and Anderson. Call for the question.
Mr. Shank?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Cleary?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Showerman?
Yes.
Chairman Horton?
Yes.
Second reading of ordinance number ninety-two.
A second reading of ordinance number ninety-two, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, Public Health Fund Budget.
So moved?
Second.
Been properly moved and seconded by councilpersons Cleary and Anderson. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I move to amend ordinance number ninety-two. Ninety-two to group items together, action items number one through thirty-four.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded by councilpersons Cleary and Anderson. Is there any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. And again, I will note that the bulk of these funds, one through thirty-four, come from grant funding. We have reached a point where the COVID-19 surge in Erie County is beyond our staff, staff's ability to keep up with contact tracing and the rest that's associated with it. I do not believe it is proper at this time to be looking at making cuts in their, in their budget, again, which is mostly grant-funded throughout these positions and throughout these lines, including travel and supplies.
Any further discussion by any members of council?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. There is no, no question that twenty twenty was, to say an unusual year would be an understatement. None of us have ever faced anything in our lifetimes like it, and we may never again, except in twenty twenty-one, when it appears as if the issues with COVID are continuing to ramp up on us, and we are going to have to be just as diligent, if not more diligent, just as careful, if not more careful, and just as conscientious about our fellow man, maybe even more conscientious than we are now. In no other area is this more important than in public health. But in no other area has this county and this council and this council invested more money, more confidence, more security, more hope than in the Health Department. The county executive and her administration have come to us time and time again, expressing to us the need to increase the Health Department's staff, to continuously increase tracers, contact tracers, in our community. She initially started with three million dollars, but specifically went to the Health Department. This council warned her that by taking that money and taking off of the top administrators that were already being paid by this county and not specifying that money to be paid within the Health Department and for these specific positions was not a wise move, but we were ignored. We attempted to have input, and I know many members that I have great respect for on this council did, did have some input in the care's funding. But that funding went to the Health Department. This council specifically set aside money through the Gaming Revenue Department and through our reserve accounts for public health safety to support the Health Department. And the Health Department came to us with this opportunity for an eight million dollar grant, which we don't have a contract for, we have a letter that says we're going to get it. This council took the chance on the Health Department to get that funding. So, yes, we have great concerns of what's happening in the Health Department, and this council has stepped up every single time to support public health in this community. This is no different in this department than what we've done in the other departments, to ask for them to be conscientious about the overtime that they use and make sure that that overtime is used in the areas that it's most essentially needed. There is no question in my mind that myself and you, as my colleagues, will continue to step forward and support this public health crisis. But as we've said earlier, this is no different than any other department. And as we're cutting across the board, the ten percent and the five percent, they, they will figure out a way, and I, I know how conscientious and how knowledgeable the Director of the Health Department is, and they, they will find ways to ensure that the work gets done and the essential overtime is taken care of. So once again, I, I will support what my colleagues are supporting, and that is to send a message equally across the board that we need to pay attention to overtime throughout Erie County. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome. Any other council people to be heard? Call for the question on the amendment, Mr. Smith.
Amending ordinance ninety-two with action sheets one through thirty-four, Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Cleary?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
No.
Mrs. Showerman?
Yes.
Mr. Shank?
Yes.
Chairman Horton?
No.
Mr. Chairman, I move to amend ordinance number ninety-two to group action items thirty-five through thirty-nine.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded by councilpersons Cleary and Anderson. Is there any discussion? Call for the question.
Mrs. Cleary?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Showerman?
Yes.
Mr. Shank?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Where'd they go? Did we lose them?
They're gone.
But this was our budget.
Yes, of course it was.
Mark, you're muted still.
Can you hear me now? Brianna?
Yeah, it looks like Melissa Dixon sent a message to Nicole to let her know that we're disconnected.
I wanted to know what our final expenditures were.
I know, that's what I want to hear too, so hopefully they get us reconnected.
Um, I am surprised, Brianna.
Me too, Mark.
I, I just can't believe what just transpired, what, what we heard, and only you and I heard that.
Hey, but, um, yeah, I mean, there's still other people on too, so we'll...
The meetings are recorded too, so...
Thank you, honey.
For what it's worth, if it's worth anything.
Yeah.
Or at least they're supposed to, oh, yeah, this, this meeting is still being recorded. I am going to, I am going to leave the meeting, and I hope you all get reconnected. Oh, there they come.
Call for the question on the amendment.
Amending ordinance ninety-three with action sheets one through four, Mrs. Showerman?
Yes.
Mr. Shank?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Cleary?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Chairman Horton?
This is on the amendment? Oh, no. No.
Mr. Chairman, I move to amend ordinance number ninety-three to group action sheets, action items, excuse me, numbers five through seven.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded by councilpersons Cleary and Anderson. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Shank?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Showerman?
Yes.
Mr. Shank?
Yes.
I missed somebody.
You missed me. That's public safety, right?
Yes.
Action Sheets one through four.
Chairman Horton? On the amendment of action sheets five through seven?
Five through seven. Yes.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Ms. Ms. Schwarzfeger?
The amended expenditure amount for the Public Safety Fund is nine million, four hundred and thirteen thousand, four hundred and forty dollars.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I move to amend face sheet of ordinance number ninety-three to Ms. Schwarzfeger's figure.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded by councilpersons Cleary and Anderson. Is there any discussion on the face sheet? Call for the question.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Cleary?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Showerman?
Yes.
Mr. Shank?
Yes.
Chairman Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve ordinance number ninety-three as amended.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded by councilpersons Cleary and Anderson. Any discussion? Roll call, please. Roll call, please.
An Ordinance 93 is amended, Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Showerman?
Yes.
Mr. Shank?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Chairman Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Before we go on, could I ask the final number of the Public Health Fund budget? Could you say that out loud? People that are following us on Zoom got kicked off and missed that number and are asking, just that it be read out loud.
The amended expenditure amount for the Public Health Fund is $13,342,565.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, well, second reading of Ordinance Number 95, 2020. Second reading of Ordinance Number 94.
Second reading of Ordinance Number 94, 2020, 2021 Gaming Fund Budget.
So moved?
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded by Finance Chairman Clear and Vice Chairman Anderson. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I move to amend Ordinance Number 94 to group Action Items 1 and 2 together.
Second.
It's been properly moved, seconded by council persons Clear and Anderson. Call for the question.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Showerman?
Yes.
Mr. Shank?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Chairman Horton?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I move to amend Ordinance Number 94 to... Read, I'm sorry, to group together, I have 3, 4, 6, and 7. Mr. Smith, just as a point of action, I can wait for 5?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded by council persons Clear and Anderson. Is there any discussion? Call for the question.
On Action Sheets 3, 4, 6, and 7, Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Showerman?
Yes.
Mr. Shank?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Chairman Horton?
Mr. Chairman, I move to amend Ordinance Number 94 to separate number 5. Action Sheet to be read.
It's been properly moved and seconded by council persons Clear and Anderson. Is there any discussion?
Chairman, I have a few words I'd like to say. Thank you. In a time of budget crisis, we have to tighten our budgets. I know our neighbors have really had to struggle with this and tighten their budgets and make things change, but I think $13,000 for a charity for private lessons for children in the city of Erie is a little bit of a much. We are county council. If this was sold as a issue of helping the children throughout the county, I'd be a little more receptive to it, but I'm telling you, I'm kind of getting tired of financing the city of Erie and all their little projects that they can't afford. If they want to fund their projects, go to the city council, ask them for the money. I'm really getting tired of paying the city of Erie's bills and all their little projects that they don't have the money for, so I will not support this. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Shank. Any other council members to be heard? I'll call for the question.
On Action Sheet 5, Mrs. Showerman?
Yes.
Mr. Shank?
No, I'm sorry. Take that back, I was reading my notes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
No.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Chairman Horton?
Mr. Chairman, I move to amend Ordinance Number 94. To, thank you, to read, to standalone number 8.
Second.
Been properly moved and seconded by council persons Clear and Anderson. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Horton, I do have a question on this one. Is your brother the person who runs this charity?
Which charity?
The Erie Urban Community Development.
He certainly is.
Are you going to abstain from voting on this?
I certainly am not.
Okay, thanks for the clarity.
Yeah, and just for the record, because this came up before, and I got an opinion, it's a term called dominus, nominus de minimis, which means that there's really nothing that amounts to any benefit that he might derive, amounts to basically nothing, and I'm certainly not getting anything. And that was an opinion from our solicitor. Any other questions by any other members of council? Call for the question.
On Action Sheet 8, Ordinance 94, Mr. Shank?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
No.
Mrs. Clear?
No.
Mr. Rastetter?
No.
Mrs. Rennie?
No.
Mrs. Showerman?
No.
Chairman Horton?
Mr. Chairman?
Yep.
I believe we need to take a pause, is that correct, for Ms. Schwarzfeger to get
Here it is. Are we ready?
Chairman Anderson? I would just like to point out that for Action Number 9, in the list for the Gaming Fund, has not changed based on the prior voting, just for the council members' general knowledge, so the numbers that were in there are still the same.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I move to amend Ordinance Number 94 to read, to read Item 9 alone, to vote on 9 alone.
It's been properly moved and seconded?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I just wanted to mention, so the public knows what we're doing here, these, all of these entities that council has either because of past councils under contract or because of the investment that we're making in human capital with these particular organizations, council has chosen to fund these particular organizations at the amounts that they will be in the budget, but I just wanted to mention for the public that we believe strongly that these items should be in the general fund budget, and if they're worthy to be paid for, they should be paid for by taxpayer dollars, that it should be transparent and open to everybody in the community of what it is that we're investing in. However, this year, the county executive had moved all of these to the Gaming Revenue Fund to be paid for out of the Gaming Revenue Funds. Because of the COVID crisis, council has made the action to support these grants and support them with Gaming Revenue Funds, but to move this to the general fund. So I just wanted to make sure that the public is aware that although we're moving these over to be transparent and to be in the general fund, that we're also taking action that these are paid for out of Gaming Revenue Funds in this particular calendar year, not coming directly out of taxpayer dollars, property taxpayer dollars this year. However, that did not occur last year, and it may not occur next year, depending on how this council feels about the success and the funding of these particular programs and our continued contracts to have to fund some of those programs. So I think it's worth noting that council has taken action to alleviate more than $2.2 million from the taxpayer by taking this money out of a fund already in existence and being fiscally accountable and responsible with our fiduciary responsibility, making sure that this is transparent so everyone can see what we're doing, and still making investments in the human capital that we set out to do, and expect no less from all of these organizations to collaborate, cooperate, and work in a way that will leverage the funds that county government is giving them to the best benefit of all taxpayers of Erie County. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Any other council members to be heard? Call for the question.
On Action Sheet Number 9, Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
No.
Mrs. Showerman?
Yes.
Mr. Shank?
Yes.
Chairman Horton?
The amended expenditures for the Gaming Fund is now $13,698,860.
Mr. Chairman, I move to amend the face sheet based on Ms. Schwarzfeger's figure.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded by council persons Clear and Anderson. Call for the, any discussion? Call for the question.
Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Showerman?
Yes.
Mr. Shank?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Chairman Horton?
Yes.
Second reading...
Mrs., or I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I move to approve Ordinance Number 94 as amended.
We just did the face sheet, right?
Yeah, I seconded.
We did 94.
Mr. Chairman, we have to amend the face sheet, and then we have to approve the ordinance as amended.
So we, yeah, so we just approved the face sheet. Call for the question.
On Ordinance 94 is amended, Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Showerman?
Yes.
Mr. Shank?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Chairman Horton?
Second reading of Ordinance Number 95.
Second reading of Ordinance Number 95, 2020, 2021 Liquid Fuels Fund Budget.
So moved?
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded by council persons Clear and Anderson. Any discussion? Call for the question.
On Ordinance Number 95, Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Showerman?
Yes.
Mr. Shank?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Chairman Horton?
Second reading of Ordinance Number 96.
Second reading of Ordinance Number 96, 2020, 2021 Pleasant Ridge Manor Operating Fund Budget.
So moved?
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded by council persons Clear and Anderson. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
On Ordinance 96, Mrs. Showerman?
Yes.
Mr. Shank?
Mr. Chairman? There is an action sheet. Just to zero out.
Yep.
Before we go on, could we amend?
Yep, let's backtrack, Mr. Smith.
I apologize.
We'll backtrack, we'll run that back. So...
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I move to amend Ordinance to group Item 1.
Second, on Ordinance 96.
On 96...
It's been properly moved and seconded, Ordinance Number 96, on Face Sheet 1. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for the question.
On the amendment, Mrs. Showerman?
Yes.
Mr. Shank?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Chairman Horton?
Yes.
This did not cause a change in the expenditure amount for a Pleasant Ridge Manor.
I move to approve the ordinance, Mr. Chairman, as amended, or Ordinance Number 96, that is, as amended.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded by council persons Clear and Anderson. Call for the discussion.
Mr. Shank?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Showerman?
Yes.
Chairman Horton?
Second reading of Pleasant, second reading of Ordinance Number 97, please.
A second reading of Ordinance Number 97, 2020, 2021 Pleasant Ridge Manor Depreciation Reserve Fund Budget.
So moved?
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded by council persons Clear and Anderson. Any discussion? Roll call on the question.
On Ordinance 97, as presented, Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Clear? Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Showerman?
Yes.
Mr. Shank?
Yes.
Chairman Horton?
Second reading of Ordinance Number 98.
A second reading of Ordinance Number 98, 2020, 2021 Erie County Care Management Budget.
So moved?
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded by council persons Clear and Anderson.
Mr. Chairman... Pardon me, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I move to amend Ordinance Number 98 to group Action Items 1 and 2.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I would like to point out...
I would like to point out that 100% of the funds that we are proposing to reduce are covered by medical assistance, and I would submit that this is a different animal than simple grant funding. I do not know the entire situation of Erie County Care Management, but I fear that this will prove to be difficult, if not impossible, to actually achieve with contracts that they have and so forth.
Any other members of council desiring to be heard?
Mr. Chairman, in this particular department, I think that council has handled that by-
Yeah. 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 Yeah.
There is no change to the expenditure as a result of these actions. Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the ordinance, number 98 is amended.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded by councilwoman Clear, councilman Anderson. Call for the question.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
No.
Mrs. Showerman?
Yes.
Mr. Shank?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Chairman Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Could I just ask that, if you'd like me to give a summary, that's fine, or somebody to just summarize number 98, that one, one and two was dealing with nonessential travel and supplies and passed, and was it five, two, or five, six, one? And that three and four passed. Was it six, one? And it did not change the face sheet, and then the ordinance itself passed as amended. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Vice Chairman Anderson. Second reading of ordinance number 99.
Second reading of ordinance number 99, 2020, 2021 General Fund Budget.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
I move to amend ordinance number 99 to group action sheets numbers one through 14.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded by council persons Clear and Anderson. Is there any discussion? Call for the question on the amendment.
Mrs. Rennie?
No.
Mrs. Showerman?
Yes.
Mr. Shank? Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Chairman Horton?
Mr. Chairman, I move to amend ordinance number 99 to group 15 through 17 action items, action sheets, excuse me.
Second, 15 through 18.
15 through 18, pardon me, Mr. Chairman, 15 through 18.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I would like to make some comments here, so the public again is aware of what we're doing here. These are items that we're dealing with in, both with the county clerk and with the positions in the council administrative offices and the election offices. I, you know, just, I mean, I can't say enough for the people that we have working for us, the professionalism, the knowledge, the commitment, the dedication. We are blessed, truly blessed, as a council and as a county, to have the people working for us that we do. And as, in the past, there's been adjustments to the pay plan that did not make it down to council in, with past councils. I applaud my colleagues for having the courage to stand forward and do that in this particular year, I think mostly because we all recognize after this election year and the tremendous amount of work that was undertaken with the election process and the confidence that all the voters of Erie County can have after that process has been completed. We know that we need to make some adjustments in that particular department, and under these items, we are doing that tonight. I am not only honored with the people that we work with to support this, but will with great enthusiasm in support these next items. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
So welcome, Vice.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I would also like to comment on these. I agree with Mr. Anderson that this is most definitely needed. I support the changes in elections and county council. But however, I would have, I would have preferred that this go through the processes within county government, and that I feel that we are putting the cart before the horse somewhat in approving these changes before they have gone through county administration, before they have gone through HR. So on principle, I will be saying no to this, but I definitely agree with the outcome of the action sheets, the desired outcome. I don't believe that the county council should be creating a situation where the areas that they supervise get special consideration other departments wouldn't get. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Rennie. Any other members of council? Call for the question.
On action sheets 15 through 18, Mrs. Showerman?
Yes.
Mr. Shank?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
No.
Chairman Horton?
Mr. Chairman, I move to amend ordinance number 99 to group action sheets 19 and 20.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded by councilwoman Rennie, excuse me, Clear, and councilman Anderson. Is there any discussion on either of these items?
Mr. Chairman? Just to look at this, and the expenditures increase on number 19, and expenditures increase on number 20, and we managed to cut other departments and so forth. Again, county council is doing, taking the appropriate action to fund a department where it should be funded. And this is a department that we happen to oversee. This is a department that we see very readily, the demands of what it is that our staff do and the departmental demands. I just think it's a shame that we didn't take the same approach with other departments throughout the-
And we had a great demand on our staff and on the equipment and on the printing and et cetera, et cetera, within these departments. You know, a preliminary budget had to be done in, by October 1st. That left almost six weeks of unknown of what was happening in the election process. We learned a few things. And, you know, to add the small amount of money in temporary staff and overtime in this department of $8,000, and then $18,000 in total in the conduct of elections for temporary staff duplicating and printing, advertising, travel, all the things that are required of all of our people to actually carry on the election, when if you look at these expenditures, at least $6,500 of that $1,800 is being decreased. You know, this is really a reasonable, both of these are just reasonable adjustments to budgets, and, you know, the county executive, the administration is going to have a number of these adjustments that have come in as we get later into the general fund. I accept their word that they were oversights or things that, you know, had changed between October 1st, and now that we're passing the final budget, these types of things happen. So I don't think we're taking exception here to doing something that we're doing completely different in other departments. I think these are just normal adjustments to a preliminary budget, and they're very reasonable. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other members of council desiring to be heard? Call for the question.
On action sheets 19 and 20, Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Showerman?
Yes.
Mr. Shank?
Yes.
Chairman Horton?
Mr. Chairman, I move to amend ordinance number 99 to have action sheets numbers 21 through 56.
It's been properly moved and seconded by council persons Clear and Anderson. Is there any discussion on any of the action sheets, 21 through 56?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. It feels futile to bring this up again. This actually does involve county dollars and so forth. It has been observed in some of our meetings that in adult and juvenile probation, there are requirements from the state that staff must have a beeper and must be on beeper duty. And I believe that a lot of these funds are going to be affected by that and probably will require a request for ordinances down the road. So again, I don't believe in making changes for the sake of appearance. I also am concerned about the reduction in prison operations, and I believe that that's going to require a request for ordinance down the road. I know that they're dealing with COVID issues that have been a challenge within the prison and have required extra overtime. So while this is being done to make a statement, in fact, with each of these departments, I just don't believe that they are appropriate and in the end will not result in any savings to the taxpayer despite good intentions. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Rennie. Are there any other council members to be heard?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I just wanted to mention that we recognize the need for the essential work that needs to continue to be done throughout the departments in Erie County, and these particular items specifically say the nonessential overtime, the nonessential expenditures for supplies, the nonessential, et cetera. So as we are reducing these, as we've done in all of the other departments, we are taking the same steps that we've taken. These in particular are, as the councilwoman, she has stated, direct impact on the taxpayers. And if in fact, these departments come to a level that they need to come back to council, you know, every department does it all the time with council. So for them to have to maybe come down one more time or bring two ordinances at the same time, it's not as if we're asking them to, you know, really go out of their way. I mean, this is a normal part of the procedures that we use on a day-to-day basis. They understand it, and I think they're accepting of it or should be accepting of it. We respect the work that they do, all the departments. That's not the point here. The point here is, you know, let's all tighten up a little bit for the betterment of all of Erie County and the community, and that's all we're asking in these particular items. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Vice Chairman Anderson. Any other council members desiring to be heard? I'll call for the question.
On action sheets 21 through 56 of the general fund, Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
No.
Mrs. Showerman?
Yes.
Mr. Shank?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Chairman Horton?
No.
No.
Mr. Chairman, I move to amend ordinance number 99 to group action sheets 57 through 60.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded by Finance Chairman Clear and Vice Chairman Anderson. Is there any discussion on items 57 through 60? Call for the question.
On action sheets 57 through 60, Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Showerman?
Yes.
Mr. Schenk?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Chairman Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I move to amend ordinance number 99 to group, yeah, 61 to 64.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded to move item 61 through 64 to amend it, do them as a group. Is there any discussion? Call for the question.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Showerman?
Yes.
Mr. Schenk?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Chairman Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I move to amend the agenda, or amend ordinance number 99 to have action sheet 65 standalone.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on action item 65? Call for the question.
Mrs. Showerman?
Yes.
Mr. Schenk?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Clear?
No.
Mr. Rastetter?
No.
Mrs. Rennie?
No.
Chairman Horton?
No.
Action sheet fails.
Mr. Chairman, I move to amend ordinance number 99 to standalone number 66.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded by Councilpersons Clear and Anderson. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chairman? Thank you. The item that we have before us is to support the responsibility that we have, and we've accepted that we have in regards to the convention center or Erie Events. We've been working with the county executive and her administration on this particular item for months now. And, boy, I'm confused as to whether they are fall under being acceptable for COVID funding, or don't fall under it, or cares funding. It's been tossed around so many times, spun in different ways, with different webs, by different people. I am just baffled as to where we are at as a government, where the administration's at in regards to this particular item. Our financial advisor, the administration's own finance director have unequivocally told us that we have a responsibility for this funding. There's a debt of over $60 million with Erie Events. And if we don't give them funding to keep them moving forward, they in fact are going to turn that $60 million debt over to us to add on to county governments. So we either make an investment in our community partner, our governmental agency as the convention center authority, and we show that we're going to invest in quality of life assets in this community such as hockey and basketball and professional baseball and the other events that come in, or we're going to show them that we're not. But we can no longer wait for county executive to decide whether she would like or wouldn't like the funding to happen in this particular area. We have given her every opportunity, five at least by count, to bring an ordinance down, and that has not transpired. And I want to particularly point out that our finance chair, Kim Clear, has worked tirelessly in this particular area, and I mean tirelessly. And I commend her for all the work and all the meetings and all the time and all of the coordination that she's put in to this particular area. So we, right now, the only time council has an opportunity to have an impact to ensure that the funding occurs. But we just didn't put it in as a straight funding. We're still holding out hope that the administration between now and the end of December will recognize that they do qualify for COVID funding and that we can save the taxpayers of Erie County money by having them funded through COVID funding. So this particular item actually suggests that any money that Erie Events receives between now and the end of the year from Erie County through COVID or other means will reduce the amount of money that we're putting in the budget for 2021. This is a reasonable and responsible action that we're taking. Certainly, everybody knows that I'm going to support this, and I appreciate all the work that's been put into this and the thought that's been put forward into this. It is now time that we take action here and show that we are going to take care of the responsibilities that we have. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Vice Chairman Anderson. Any other council members desiring to be heard?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
I would like to acknowledge what Erie Events contributes to the local area, the economy, quality of life in this area. And I would like to acknowledge the fact that the county of Erie has a commitment to Erie Events. With that being said, I would doubt, if given a choice, that taxpayers would approve a referendum to be the guarantors of a loan for any entity within the county. I don't care what they provide. So I do have issues with this, and yet I know that we must move forward with it. I would prefer that council not commit to this until we have exhausted all other avenues. And we still have another month, month and a half, at the very least, to try to pursue other options. And so, and we have the opportunity to call a special meeting of council for that as well. So I would like to see that, I'm not going to vote in favor of this. I do want to see them made whole. I do want to see them get their money, but I would like to see other avenues pursued. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Rennie. Any other council members to be heard? Call for the question.
On action sheet 66, Mr. Schenk?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
No.
Mrs. Showerman?
Yes.
Chairman Horton?
No.
Mr. Chairman, I move to amend ordinance number 99 to standalone number 67.
Second. Oh, sorry.
Within, I may need to move to, excuse me, amend the revenue as being now $2,262,837.
Second as amended, Mr. Chairman.
It's been properly moved and seconded. Any discussion? Roll call on the question.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Showerman?
Yes.
Mr. Schenk?
Yes.
Chairman Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I do believe that we need to pause at this moment in ordinance number 99 to get our numbers from our financial expert accountant, county council's accountant, Ms. Schwarzberger. And I don't know how we, do we have a?
We may move for recess.
Can I move for recess?
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded.
That means that action sheet 65 passes rather than fails.
Mr. Chairman, I think I am moving to amend ordinance number 99 to group action 68.
Second.
Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Showerman?
Yes.
Mr. Schenk?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Chairman Horton?
Mr. Chairman, I believe that I am making a motion to recess.
Second.
Mr. Chairman? I'm sorry, but before we recess, might we move to change the face sheet of ordinance 98?
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I move to amend the face sheet of ordinance number 98, and it would be amended to this amount, $16,447,297.
Second.
Mr. Rastetter? Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Showerman?
Yes.
Mr. Schenk?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Chairman Horton?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Andre. I appreciate that.
Mr. Chairman, I now move to go to recess?
Yeah, we'll pop this in the back, back there on the left.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move to amend ordinance number ninety-nine and to increase revenue by three million, four hundred and eight thousand, two hundred and eighty-seven dollars.
It's been properly moved and seconded by council persons Clear and Anderson. Is there any discussion?
Any discussion?
Call for the question.
On the amendment to ordinance ninety-nine, Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
No.
Mrs. Showerman? Mr. Shank?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Chairman Horton?
No.
The change in expenditures for the general fund is to one hundred and fourteen million, eight hundred and forty-nine thousand, thirty dollars. And the revenue is amended to one hundred and, no, kidding. That is all.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I move to amend the face sheet to Ms. Schwarzberger's figure.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded by finance chair Clear and vice chair Anderson. Is there any discussion? Call for the question.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Showerman? Mr. Shank?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Chairman Horton?
Yes.
Second reading of ordinance.
I'm so sorry, Mr. Chairman. Before we go to ordinance one hundred, I would like to move to approve ordinance number ninety-nine as amended. I know, I'm sorry.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded by council person Clear and Anderson. Any discussion? Seeing here, and call for the question.
Mrs. Showerman?
Yes.
Mr. Shank?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
No.
Chairman Horton?
No.
We're ready for the second reading of ordinance one hundred, Mr. Chairman.
Yep.
A second reading of ordinance number one hundred, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, real estate tax levy.
So moved.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. Council person's Clear and Anderson.
Now we have to amend for the number.
Okay. Mr. Chairman? I move to amend, I'm sorry, ordinance one hundred.
Five point nine six mils. Five nine six.
Point.
Five point nine six.
Five point nine.
Five nine six. Per one hundred.
I would like to amend ordinance number one hundred to reflect point five nine six on each one hundred of assessed value.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded.
Question?
Seeing here, and call for the question.
No, I have a question.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, I have a question.
You got it.
Just for a point of clarity, are we voting on a tax increase at this point?
Two point two five.
Yes, so this is a vote for a tax increase of two point two five.
It's a vote to set the mils, which is point two five mils higher than it was last year.
Which brings it to point five nine six from point five seven one.
Thank you.
Yeah, so, I lost my place. We have a motion on the floor. It's been, call for the question?
On the motion, Mr. Shank?
No.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
No.
Mrs. Showerman?
Yes.
Chairman Horton?
No.
Motion passes?
Finished.
Oh, yes. The ordinance as amended, please.
I'm sorry, I move to approve the ordinance as amended.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. Call for the question.
Mr. Rastetter? No, I'm sorry, Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
No.
Mrs. Showerman?
Yes.
Mr. Shank?
Yes.
Chairman Horton?
No.
That's it? I'm saying motion for term.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
That's like six and a half hours.